I'm going to call this city council work session being December twelfth, twenty twenty-three to order. It is three oh four P M. Item two invocation will be given to us by Councilmember Thompson. Anybody wishing to join us for a moment of prayer can do so by voluntary standing up and joining us for a moment.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, look over us today as we go through the city's business. Help us to make good decisions for the citizens of Odessa. Bless us all during this holiday season and be with our friends around the world who are not enjoying as good a time as we are. Be with our first responders, keep them safe and well, out of harm's way. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. You see that? Want to extend real quickly a, may the Holy Spirit be each with each and every one of you and also with the tornado victims in Clarksville, Tennessee. We're going to move on to item three, discuss leadership resiliency, resiliency and how it relates to our responsibilities. Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Vaughn, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and then you have the floor.
So for those of you that are down here, my name is Julia Vaughn and I coach with leadership and resiliency. And to council members, thank you so much. I'm so honored to be here. Again, my name is Julia Vaughn. And standing here in front of you today and speaking on resilience is something that's so near and dear to my heart. And a little bit about why it's near and dear to my heart, I've been through quite a few traumas in the last few years personally. And one is two years ago on the twenty-first of this month, my son had a heart attack and died. And so that's why this is really near and dear to me. Resilience can really be about recovery or the ability to push through a storm. So I know you have a resilience team in the state of Texas that comes in when there's a trauma or something happens. But they're here for three, four, or five, maybe six days, right? They leave you with the phone number and they're gone. And I don't want to be that way. I want to be a phone number, but I also want to be a very present presence. That if you need me here, I'm coming back. So, um, something that's very important to remember when faced with a traumatic experience is that everybody handles grief totally differently. A different set of circumstances, a different set of perspectives. So I'm going to use a beach ball and show you exactly how that works. So I'm going to ask everybody, I'm going to turn. What color do you see?
Orange.
Red, orange, and yellow.
Red, orange, and yellow.
Same.
Right? Okay. The thing is, I see blue and green. And so we have to remember that everybody has a different perspective. Everybody comes to it with a different set of circumstances. And we need to be not only perspective and circumstances, but there's also culture and social. And being sensitive to those and all the diversities is very important also. Resiliency is a key factor when it comes to responding to crisis. There's natural disasters, there's public health emergencies. And communities that are resilient, they stand strong, they stand ready, they mobilize quickly, they manage damage, and they recover more effectively. On an individual level, resilience plays a vital role in mental and emotional well-being. And allows people to really cope with the stress, to handle trauma, to look adversity in the face. All while fostering a positive mental mindset, even in challenging and sometimes devastating circumstances. I believe that a more resilient Odessa will be characterized by strong social bonds and mutual support. And in times of crisis, those connections will become essential for sharing resources, providing emotional support, and collectively navigating challenges. Resilient individuals and communities tend to really be more innovative and effectively problem solvers. They identify opportunities with challenges, they're more adaptable, and they find creative solutions to really tough problems. Building resilience in a community is an investment in preparedness. When you're prepared, you're ready for the future challenges. And you adapt to emerging threats and face them with confidence. So I propose a program, and the goals of this program would be, number one, to promote emotional well-being. A supportive community atmosphere that acknowledges and addresses the emotional needs of those experiencing grief and loss. Odessa's connections will be strengthened to where no one feels isolated, especially during a loss. Taking time to educate in order to promote open conversations, we will focus on leadership and resilience to create a culture of empathy and understanding. And offering support, this support system would be for individuals and families going through all stages of illness, loss, and grief. Included in this support would be coaching and other informational resources. This program could be rolled out in stages, starting with a retreat maybe the beginning of next quarter. And building on that opening session, we will discover concerns and aspirations that each of you have for Odessa. I see once a month there being a facilitator-led Leadership and Resilience Day dedicated to making Odessa stronger. A few key components. Community support groups where individuals can share experiences, emotions, and coping strategies in a safe and empathetic area. Grief education workshops and seminars to really educate the community about all the different phases of grief. Getting rid of any myths and providing tools for coping and supporting one another. Community events and memorials to honor and remember those who've been lost, providing opportunity for community healing. Coaching services for individuals and families going through grief to learn resilience. I'd like for there to be a resource hub where everyone will have access to reading material and contact details. For myself and other coaches in the area to gain support related to leadership and resilience. Training for the community leaders to enhance their abilities to recognize and respond to the needs. The benefits? It will empower individuals who are equipped with the tools and resources to readily navigate the grieving process, reducing the stigma associated with loss. Strengthening community bonds that will increase social support for individuals and families in the time of trauma. Increase access to coaching and support services. This Odessa resilience program will foster a community that acknowledges and supports those experiencing trauma and grief. Together we can and we will find strength and hope in the face of trauma, ensuring that no one walks the journey alone. Thank you. Any questions?
Council, any questions towards Ms. Vaughn? Ms. Vaughn, how long you been practicing in the resiliency as far as counseling things of that nature?
Okay, so.
And some of your credentials?
I started in coaching ten years ago. I did psychology and life coaching at Liberty University. My master's that's in human service counseling and life coaching also at Liberty. And I'm currently working on my doctorate in community care and counseling with a concentration in traumatology.
Okay. Now, in the city of Odessa, we do have a resiliency center. Is that right, Chief?
Yes, sir.
And that was established by the governor after the mass shooting. But that is going to our first responders and their families. One thing that we've seen, I think we've seen it here lately, is through the fentanyl poisoning. Uh, and then we've had some other advocates actually got together and go back, but hearing constantly, they had loved ones that were murdered. And so they have not coped well. And one of the outlets of anger has been towards our police department, our sales department, the city. One mother was on the phone for almost three hours. And she has not coped well and she has really latched out because I haven't taken the initiative to be able to solve her, the murder of her son. I said, I can't do that. That's not my role. But I do see, from seeing that in members of our community, uh, they grieve. And there's some that grieve a lot more openly and it's a wound that it doesn't heal. And so when I, I think we ran into the Maxwell Leadership. And you had asked me and I talked about my recent loss of my father. And so, um, I guess my question here is, as a community base, how do you see how a city can roll something out like this or make it effective? Or how, I mean, what are you an envision?
So my envision is, first of all, to have maybe a two-day retreat. For people who are interested in the resilience first, come forward, meet there, find out what their strength is, what their weakness is. Where do they want to really grow? And we can roll it out from anything. When I did this talk, I just kind of came from a place of what would be beneficial for me. That doesn't mean I touched on everything because there's so much more. Um, in the case of that mom, you're right. I will never understand what happened to my son. I mean, I know I had a heart attack, but why? The confusion that comes with that. And I'm a person of faith. And so, you know, the confusion that I look at God every day and go, why? That's not going to go away.
Yeah, right.
But what we can do is, my son, for instance, his whole goal in life was to make the world a better place. And that's kind of, my resilience has always been there because my dad was a star basketball player. So it was one of those situations where, you know, come on, you can do this, we can get through this, you don't give up. I can hear his voice when my son died because he's been gone for fourteen years. Come on, we're going to get through this. You know, so that was the beginning of my resilience. But to make the world a better place, that is my mission. And I picked that up for my son.
All right. Council, do you have any other questions?
May I ask you how old your son was?
He was thirty-four.
Thirty-four, yeah. Sorry.
And it so happens that that was my dad's number and the age of my sister was when my dad passed away. So it was kind of like, that's become a number for our family that we know. I wake up in the middle of the night, I am of that age, it's either two thirty-four, three thirty-four, four thirty-four. There's always thirty-four in the clock.
Okay. Well, if there's anything, something that we can wind up reading and stuff like that?
Well, I did bring these.
Okay.
And I'm just gonna, and it has my contact information on there. If you think of any more questions, please reach out to me individually.
Your email on that?
Make a note on there. Um, and I will get back with you.
Sounds good. Do we have enough? I think so. Yes, sir.
I think I count on them out, but if you need more, you know.
Okay. Council, any other questions? Any questions?
Ms. Vaughn, thank you. Really appreciate your time and that presentation.
Thank you so much.
And once again, sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Hey, Holy Spirit be with you. We're going to move on to item number four, discuss the ordering of twenty additional twenty twenty-four police expeditions to replenish the A G M fleet.
Mr. Adams, you're not Mr. Adams.
I'm not Mr. Adams.
Oh, that's right, he's in training.
Yes. Chris isn't here today, so I'll be presenting today.
All right. See how you do.
I hope I don't let him down. So we are here looking for your consent and your consideration to purchase twenty twenty twenty-four police Ford expeditions for, from Chalmers Ford at the cost of one million, one hundred and twenty thousand and twenty dollars to replace current twenty fifteen Chevrolet Tahos that have reached the end of their life expectancy. The order cycle for twenty twenty-four fleet vehicles closes twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. These vehicles will be ordered with a confirmed delivery date of March twenty twenty-four. This price is for the vehicle only, not the upfitting which are currently awaiting quotes on from two upfitters. The vehicles which will replace will be sold at auction. The current P D Tahos and fleet are twenty fifteen and we're on a seven-year replacement cycle. The repair cycle is not feasible for P D vehicles. The repair cost on these vehicles is growing exponentially at a rate that cannot be kept up with. And that's Mr. Adams' notes.
How much of the equipment on the inside is reusable? Is there a percentage or does that?
I don't know.
It's just the radios and all that that's taken out, the rest goes with the vehicle?
Chief, do you know?
They work on the project, but the vast majority of it is reusable. Uh, we're not going to reuse the radios because as far came to you guys a few weeks ago, some of the radios that we have in those vehicles are the old radios. And but we didn't ask for a mass purchase because we're going to cycle those out as these vehicles, the new vehicles come in. So not the radios, but the in-car camera system, that's reusable.
Okay.
Um, and by our contract with Exxon, they replace that stuff every three to five years.
So the lights, the stickers.
So all that stuff, right. Um, so all the stuff inside, the radar, that radars come back new because the life cycle after five or seven years is pretty much done for those radars. The big expenses is the in-car camera system and the radios. Again, with these radios, we're going to replace them because they're not going to be compatible with the new radio system when we join that with NIM.
Reason why I ask is, and I think I shared that with you a while back, a buddy of mine bought one from Brady. And he drove it back. It had all the decals, the lights. I mean, it was like, I was shocked. I said, how was the drive? I said, everybody got out of my way. And so we were at, we were at the office and we were playing with the sirens and then Chief looked at it, I swear to God, we were at, on the parking lot, we weren't on the street. But yeah, we were just playing with the sirens. And I said, man, and so I called it, she goes, hey, we got all this equipment we got to get rid of, can you use it? Not really. So we're trying to donate it.
Right.
So yeah, our equipment services here will take all that stuff off before they take that off. So they, they will never send any of that. And then that stuff, yes.
I've been trying to, I've been trying to find one myself to make a Ghostbuster vehicle, but I haven't found one.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes, sir.
Did you mention the dealership where we are going to be getting these vehicles from, by insurance?
Yes, sir. It's Chalmers Ford in New Mexico.
Chief, question to you then following his, my question to Mr. Bernard. Do you have a bidding process for different Ford dealerships when you, when you need to replace these vehicles? I mean, I guess, you know, I think back to Bythe Basin, local Midland, Odessa, whatever.
So we don't really handle that. That's purchasing and the equipment services. I will say one of the things that we looked at is when this last purchase of Tahos that we went through, when we looked at the Chevys, we were looking at probably a two thousand twenty-six before delivery of those vehicles. And that last purchase, some of the Fords are already in. So I mean, that's a significant difference in time that we, you know. Some of these vehicles have twenty, a hundred and twenty thousand miles on them. They're, and not just that, when you look at these police vehicles, you don't just think about miles, you think about hours. Because there's a lot of times you have to leave those vehicles running with all the equipment in them. If you, when you're on a call, right, if you're on a call for an hour out somewhere, that vehicle's running outside because if not, all the equipment in there, the video stuff, the that's going to run the battery down when you get back in, you're not going to have that. So you have to leave them running. Do you have those hours also on those motors and?
Immigration, immigration goes through.
May I answer one of your questions, Mr. Voskas? So I spoke with Mr. Adams and I asked the same question. And I don't believe that local dealership was able to order that many in bulk. It was a referral to New Mexico, and that's why we ended up in New Mexico with these vehicles because.
And they started, yeah, they started local and it just circled through the state of Texas. And, um, they found some in New Mexico, in California, and Phoenix. So all these were available now. The current package that we just received, the first fifteen, took two years to receive. And that's something that just, we just can't, we can't wait. So this will, this will be another twenty and we've received another shipment of fifteen. So we'll have a total of fifty, fifteen new Tahos. So this is, this is all a part of a cycle that started just a bad business decision that we, that we made a few years back by converting them to a seven to nine-year cycle. And that there is no way that we could sustain this and expect our fleet and by extension, our public safety to maintain vehicles out on the street. There's no way.
Yeah.
So.
Not with the usage.
No, not with the usage. So, uh, Mr. Adams, Chris has been doing a very diligent job in locating these vehicles. And while they're not Tahos, expeditions, uh, but he did consult with the police department and they verified that they're, they are usable because there is a computer and passenger consideration.
We're going back to Ford's.
You know, at this point, we needed a vehicle, they went on a search, Chris, Chris Adams and Deputy Davidson went on a search for these vehicles. They looked at some trucks, they looked at the Dodge Rangos. I have a photo of Matt sitting in the backseat of the Dodge Rango with his knees up around. Just wasn't going to work, right? One of the things, the two, the two main things that I really wanted out of these vehicles was enough room in the backseat so that we didn't have to shove arrestees in there because that's been causing issues, right? Right? We have to have enough room for that. And then we also have to have enough room in the front for the officers. That's a ten-hour shift that they're working with all that equipment there. And I think the expedition fit that, the Tahoe's fit that, the Rangos did not.
We're going to go with the new, uh, the new decals, everything. It's the blue, the new, the little shark. Right there on, uh, what is it, Boulder in the Bunnell? You have one of the officers there? Let me tell you, ever since he moved in, everybody stops at that four-way stop. He's out there, even the kids slow down. That's not an issue anymore because those kids will just blow by. And I was like, they still, and they forget that, you know, he lives there. So they think he's parked up and it's worked beautifully. And so, uh, yeah, I gotta get more officers around there. Those corners, those gray.
You better order one more. You lost one yesterday.
We did lose one yesterday.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. It's gone.
Yeah. Man, the thing is, with seven years, we're getting less than auction. Not that those things are profitable, but, god dang, seven, nine-year rotation.
That's, uh, it's just bad business decision.
So what rotation are we on now? Four, five?
Yes.
It's reasonable. Council, any other questions?
Thank you for asking my question.
I think there's a consensus. We'll move on forward. Good job.
Thank you very much. And I like that we're going to get them, start getting them in in March and just get them outfitted after that.
We're going to move on to item five, discuss the City of Odessa Municipal Court data matrix. Ms. Albertson, there you go. How are you? No, go for it. If it'd been coffee, we'd have all wanted some.
Um, my name is Leah Albertson and I'm the interim municipal court director and having a great time with my two great supervisors, Valia Moncha and Michelle Sanchez.
Real quick, how's your day?
Hey, you know, he's still learning me, but.
Okay, real quick, thank you.
Yes, he's, I've been really, a lot of hot, a lot of happy prayers. Um, I did do a PowerPoint. I guess you guys can sit behind me. I was thinking, wow, you're going to have a sore neck going behind that lights. So there you go. Um, in Fort Worth, we had to do council, we had to do PowerPoint, so sorry about that. I may.
This is just a new upgrade?
Maybe death by PowerPoint. Um, one of my favorite sayings is by Dr. Martin Luther King Junior, and he talks about justice. We will not be satisfied until justice rolls down like waters and righteousness like a mighty stream. I think that's really important as a court that we have a focus and a purpose. Um, and I think Dr. King did a great job talking about that. My little mouse is, he told me to shake it, so I'm going to shake it. Um, this is my agenda. I'm going to talk about the introduction, currently municipal court and our focuses. I'll talk about our challenges. There's a few. Uh, we'll talk about data metrics, um, I believe in a data metrics and a data-driven city. Um, milestones, things that we're going to accomplish over the next year, and then a summary of our goals for twenty-four. And our introduction, if I can get the little mouse to click. There we go. Um, so we really want to ensure access to justice. Um, when you look at any article about justice, you will hear that term. It's very, very common, ever since Ferguson, if you're aware of Ferguson, remember those days. People are in the oil patch or they're a mother who's working two jobs, or they may be a juvenile who's in school, right, during the day. And so our court operates during the business day. So we really want to provide different access, access opportunities for these individuals so that they can continue to work and provide for their families and still take care of their responsibility to the court. Um, the next item is talking about promoting efficiency, transparency, right? Government's all about transparency, right? We want to make sure that we have a transparent relationship with the public. And we also want to have fair and timely dispositions. That means we, we don't want to make someone wait for six months to come to court if they got a ticket today, right? Because they might forget about it. Maybe not you, but I would forget six months from now. Um, we also want to exercise leadership amongst our justice-related partners. So we may be a court and we're one branch of government, right? We're the judicial branch. But the executive branch and the legislative branch and body is very important and we have to work together. Um, our goal is to not operate in isolation, um, but we also must maintain our judicial independence, right? The branches of government balance each other. And Mr. Jones and I had that conversation yesterday. We, it's very important that we have those segregations of power, but that we also work together, right? So let's see if I can get this story. This is our current organizational chart. If you'll notice, all the bright white, the bright white is an empty space. So we have an empty seat in all these spots. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Um, the items in blue are filled. Um, and so, and then I have the judges at the top on the left in yellow. We do have one new clerk that started today and we have another one starting next week. But you can notice that we have quite a few blank spots in, in white. Um, the items in red are my part-time positions that I'm hopeful to give back to the city as we implement new technologies. Because we want to be able to give back and utilize our employees in a more technological fashion. Sorry, it's not wanting to click. These are my challenges. Here we go. Um, I've got a few, if you'll notice. These are going to be my top twelve. Uh, we have a few others. I'm sure you guys could elaborate on those if I gave you a, an hour or so. Uh, but these are our main, main focus areas. One of our items on the state reports. So I don't know if you're aware, but there's seven state reports that are required by a municipal court. One of the most important that the state looks at closely is our fines, fees, and court cost report. Um, unfortunately, um, uh, my predecessor did not complete that report timely. Um, and we did incur a ten percent penalty fee of our fines. So I just wanted to give you a heads up. Um, I've already been talking, obviously, with Mr. Brunel. Um, and there's some other state reports that have some incorrect data, and we'll talk more about data in a short bit. Uh, twenty-four-seven technology. How many of you like a twenty-four-hour pharmacy? Anybody? You guys like a twenty-four-hour pharmacy? There's only two here. I found out really quickly. Um, and so, um, think about technology and court. If you are in the patch and let's say you work a day shift and you can't get to court, right? Um, but you've got to take off work and you're going to lose pay. Or let's say you run a business, right, and you've got people there. Twenty-four-hour seven technology is really important today in this, in this era. Um, ninety-seven percent of Americans have a cell phone. Did you know that? Ninety-seven percent. In the state of Texas, actually, you can get a free cell phone. I don't know if you're aware of that, but if you qualify under the federal government uh, for indigence, you can get a free cell phone. Um, so there you go.
All the people coming from.
Everybody's going to be getting on there looking for that free cell phone. I can give you the link. Um, the other thing that's a challenge for us is silos. I'm sure you guys are aware that there's many departments in the city. And we all have to work together, right? We're one city. I mean, I've learned that over my career of thirty-five years. And it's very important that we maintain that integrity of our division of justice, but we also have to break down silos. Um, and I want to say that Valia, Michelle, and I. Um, and I wanna say that Valia, Michelle and I, they call us the Tress Amigos, that's our nickname, uh, we have been diligently reaching out to all of our parent, uh, departments, especially the ones that focus, uh, with our department, so like code and police, fire. Um, and we've met with them, we've talked with them, we're trying to build our bridges, um, to be better, more efficient, right? And provide, provide access to justice on any offense, no matter what that is. Policies. Policies change in government because of our legislators, right? And a lot of them don't understand court, they've had some fun laws over the years that I've seen, that we couldn't enforce or implement. One of them is cellphones, that's a challenge, Chief and I joked about that the other day. It's really, really tough to get those, you know, enforced. But policies change every two years, so, that's a challenge for a court, especially a court that has three hundred thousand people in this area, right, either living or working here, um, that's a lot of changes that you have to implement, and a lot of people, um, and a lot of traffic, right, that we, that we do have to work with. So, policies changing is a challenge for us. Workforce retention. Did you know that a court clerk, I'm gonna let y'all see this book, I'm gonna let you pass it around, I'll start with my city secretary. This book is the first of three that our court clerks take to become certified court clerks. And she's already seen it, she knows what it's like. It's a thousand-page book, and it's a four-hour test, you have to pass all three parts of that test the first time, or you have to retake it six months later. And it is everything you can imagine, that's just one level of three. And so, my goal is to give you a court clerk that is certified, so that they are giving the right information to the right people, and that people have access to justice and are getting the correct information. It also makes us more efficient. Um, but I wanted you to understand, but did you know that your court clerks are making one of the lowest salaries in the entire city? So, if I wanna keep those court clerks, they could go to almost any other department and make more money. That's a tough one, okay? So, I just wanna really focus on, um, workforce retention solutions. Security, we have none. No, we do have a little, we have a, a part, uh, some that does help a little bit with security from the police department, I'm thankful for the chief, um, but we don't have good court security. We've had two incidences in the last two weeks, uh, where someone could've gotten hurt. And how bad is that, to be able in the court, have an incident where someone's shot or hurt, right? Um, we've had people...
Incidents at the court or in the lobby?
No, in the lobby, but in the court or in the lobby. One in the courtroom, one in the lobby. And it doesn't, we have all these people there, constituents, right, that are in the lobby, that someone could really get hurt, and we don't have someone there to protect us.
And will we try to address that?
I tried to address that two years ago. Yeah, well, that's one of my number-one things out of my twelve, so you'll, you'll see a solution that I wanna propose to you next month. Um, our judiciary, every two years, because we have appointed judges, then that is a change for us, and that can give us some challenges, uh, because we have to redo our standing orders based on each judge that comes in as presiding. Education, we talked about education, certified court clerks give the right information. Uh, equipment, we have, uh, some very old equipment, um, and equipment that I honestly hadn't seen in a long time. Um, I'm not, um, we have, uh, a lot of people in our community that do not have English as a first language. They may not be Tex-Mex, right, speaking people, but they may be Guatemalan, they may be Cuban, we have a lot of refugees coming through right now. Um, and they don't speak English as their first language, so we have what's called a language line. And that language line allows the translator on the phone to talk with the judge and the clerk and the defendant. Guess what we use right now to be able to do that translation? A regular office desk phone. No one can hear clearly, no one can understand clearly. We should have...
A rotary now?
Uh, well, it's a punch- it's a tou- a touchtone. How about a touchtone?
Okay.
Touchtone, okay, I'm not that old-school. I did have a rotary growing up, I don't know if you're trying to judge me.
It would not surprise me, I just wanted clarification.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanna say, no, it's a touchtone, but the speaker is obviously not conformed. Uh, we need to have a conference room speaker, right? Something that a defendant can hear clearly, and the judge, the judge can't understand or hear them. So, that's something, just an example of equipment. Workflows. Um, when each court has a person who implements a software package, I've implemented in thirty-nine different states over my years and done consulting work, um, as I work through court. And I will tell you that workflows are specific to the person who implements, but you have to document, right? If you had a business and no one left you instructions on how to process things, how well do you feel that your predecessor could function, right? So, we don't have, uh, sufficient workflows or explanations on how the processes were built. We just have a lot of these little letters that we do, and we're having to break all that down into realistic functioning criteria to make sure that we're following the law. And that's a very time-consuming task. E-citations, I'm sure the chief has shared with you already about e-citations, but I'll add to it. Um, we currently get errors every day with the current, um, beta-tested, um, citation writer for OPD, um, and we were, uh, approached today and met with UTPB, I'm trying to get all my initials right, um, and they are also looking at a beta software for e-citations.
We still writing our citations, actually?
Yeah.
We're doing the electronic ones, okay?
We have e-citations, right. Um, and so, they came to us asking if we would also take another beta software, and I told them that they gave me three Texas courts that are using it successfully with our software, that we would consider that. But we can't, we can't, we're too large, we have three hundred thousand people here. I mean, it's just too difficult. And, uh, we're not expediently processing these defendants, because we're getting tickets that have the same ticket number, two different defendants, so, it's a problem. Um, and we are working diligently with PD, and OPD has been amazing to help us. I did not realize that until I came, no one was giving them these tickets, um, these errors, they were put in a drawer, um, and had lots of checks and money with them, and anyway, whole nother story there. Um, I know you're laughing, but it's really true, you can't make this up. Uh, so, that's something we're working on right now. Um, the last one is data integrity, and I think that one is key and critical. If our data's incorrect, our state reports are incorrect, if our state reports are incorrect, we can be fined or penalized, we don't want that. So, now you hear my challenges, now I've got some solutions for you, how about that?
Well, there, there's...
There we go.
There's something new, yeah.
Yeah. Data metrics. Um, I came from a data city, a data-driven city, Fort Worth's very data-driven, and I really feel passionately about it. We were in Southlake as well. Um, one of the most important, important measurements is gonna be a case clearance rate. Each one of you, maybe one of you's an attorney or a judge, one attorney, uh, but judges or you've had experience in the legal in the past, but if not, you're not really gonna understand what a clearance rate is, you're not really gonna know if I'm doing a good job. Now, Mr. Beckmeyer's probably worked with many others as well in the judiciary, but you don't have the knowledge of thirty-five years, right? And you do, you've got the experience from court, but I'm just saying, but most people don't have that experience. So, you can't tell if I'm doing a good job. I mean, you can guess if you hear good things, but you really don't know unless I can give you measurements. So, this case clearance rate will help us avoid a backlog. Right now, if you get a ticket in Odessa, it's gonna be three to four months before I can even set you your first court date. We're that far behind. Um, process improvement, we've gotta improve our processes to become more expedient. Our co- our compliance rates are not gonna get better, our revenues won't increase unless we are expedient, right? If you get a doctor's note and it's six months out for your cleaning, how many times would you forget that if you don't write it down? Right? Well, think about getting a ticket four to six months later, you might forget about it, right? That's, that's human nature. Our goal is gonna be high, Goppi knows, I've put lots of stretch goals out here, so be prepared. We want a hundred percent. Now, are we gonna get a hundred percent? Probably not, especially right now, we're probably at about thirty-two percent, which is well below, um, what my goal would be. Um, however, our goal will be a hundred percent. These, the clearance rate is gonna take every case that comes into court, brand-new, for a given month, and then every case that's been closed, so it's a comparison. So, we'll have this metric, and I'll be providing this to you each quarter to let you know how well our case clearance rate is. Please, please don't throw, um, a stone at me yet, give me a chance to try to fix some of it, but understand that I am gonna give you data and give you metrics, and you will see improvement, okay? But I do wanna give you something to benchmark our work. I'm trying to click this, it doesn't like me. Time to disposition's the number-two measurement in court. These metrics, I didn't preface myself correctly, the National Center for State Courts, I have my, um, ICM, my accreditation for the National Center for State Courts, and these are parts of the measurements that they use nationwide, so I can do a comparison against other states, other cities that are using these same measurements. I've put them in place in different cities as well, so I am aware of how to do this. Um, one of the things about time to disposition, how long is it gonna take from the day you get that ticket until I close it? Whatever that looks like, right? So, the length of time to process a case, we wanna do, uh, a comparison of performance against other entities, including the state of Texas, I would like to compare myself with other cities. And then we also wanna provide a meaningful measurement to you, because you're our governing body, right? And we wanna be able to provide that to you, so that you can see that we are processing our cases timely. This'll be a rough, this is just an example of a chart. I'm gonna break it down by traffic, parking, criminal, and civil ordinance, okay? And we'll be able to let you see the time to disposition, so that you'll see how many days, between thirty and a hundred and eighty days, okay? An average case, no matter how long, the judge has up to a hundred and eighty days to process a case or give deferment, so that a hundred and eighty-day window is a really good timestamp for you. I board, have I bored you yet? Y'all are asleep? Okay.
You got our attention, that's for sure.
All right.
Especially with the checks.
I'm sorry about that. I, I'd wanted to tell you, no, I'm joking, I was gonna tell you. Uh, reliability, integrity of data, I've talked a lot about data. Um, accuracy of our court proceedings, uh, one of the things I noticed was that we have a fines and fees report where the commercial driver's license violations, the fine for certain violations of commercial motor vehicles, goes into a certain part on the state report, on the fines and fees report. Well, it was blank, so it tells me, and you, how many commercial vehicles do we have here?
Uh, we just got a number, didn't we? Twenty-twenty-one?
How many?
Three hu- three hundred, uh...
Three hundred a day.
Okay, well, we don't have any violations for those, no, I'm joking, we do. Um, they're just not being reported correctly to the state. The state gets upset about a few things. They get upset when we don't give them their money, okay? They, they punish us, and they also get upset with us if we don't give them correct data, because they will audit us, right? Now, we do, I did volunteer, just so you know, I wanna tell you this, Mayor, I volunteered to be the first department to be audited by our new internal auditor department, because I'd really like to be the first. Um, I've got some examples on what I used to do to audit courts, and I would like somebody to come in to give us a good, a good reckoning and explain, um, to you from data, a data point of view. Um, but this is a really important one, this is gonna tell us about our data, and then one of the things, we have some paper that still moves through court, and I came from a paper-light environment back in two thousand and six, seven, eight, nine, so I'm kind of not a paper person, I know you guys probably love paper. Um, but it's really, it's a way things can get lost, inefficiencies happen, and it causes us to be slower, right? If I'm, if I'm taking a paper ticket from PD, I'm sending a clerk over to pick that up, I'm taking it to another clerk's desk, they've gotta put it in the system manually, and then I've gotta take that and scan it in the system, and then I've gotta go take it and shred it in the shredder, and then I can actually process that ticket. That's a lot, and if we do it electronically, it's ins- it's instantaneous, right? A person can come and take their ticket that day. So, that's kind of where that comes from. And here's an example of, if I can get it to work. He said shake it, so I'm shaking it. Oh, come on. He just doesn't like me, this little thing, come on. Oh, I did it!
Oh, clicked it twice.
Sorry about that, I clicked, I'm a click, quick clicker. I'm trying, but it, 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 it doesn't wanna go. Let me try.
Conceivance.
I'm so sorry.
Is it the wood grain that's messing up the, uh, the laser on there, causing it to skip?
This is touchscreen, too.
Is it?
Yeah.
Shoot, let me try that. Nobody told me it was touchscreen. Okay, well...
That's you.
It's not touchscreen. See, touching.
Nope, there it goes, yeah.
You mind to get it to go backwards, that's never close for that. There we go. All right, I'll touch it. It just comes to me to my answer.
There you go.
I'll do it. Okay, so this is an example of the reliability, integrity of the data, our goal would be a hundred percent compliant, right, with the, with the data, but right now, I, I don't even, I couldn't even give you an answer right now, I, I don't really, but we will start measuring that for you, and I will give you a quarterly update. The next one, LEOs, uh, LFOs, I'm sorry, is the new term, then, for the National Center of State Courts. It stands for legal financial obligation. We can't call it revenue, because it's court, so I just wanna clarify that, we'll be talking a lot about that over the next year. Um, so what happens is, we have to, as a judiciary, be integratable, right? Because we want the public to trust us, right? You want public to trust you, you're the city council, so we want the same thing in court. Um, we do have to enforce our judicial orders, so whatever judgment the judge comes up with is what has to be followed. Now, if I'm a single mom and I'm on food stamps, guess what? The federal government or the state's already determined I'm indigent, so the judge cannot force someone to pay a fine or go to jail, right? That's called pay or lay, you can't do that, it's illegal, okay? So, what happens is, they may get community service, so we'll start partnering with more of our internal city departments to come up with some community service options, but if I'm a single mom with two kids, working two jobs, I'm probably not gonna get a ton of community service, I'll probably get ten hours, because that's probably the most I could do. Remember, the pun- the punishment has to equal the crime. And if I get a speeding ticket, you know, you gotta put yourself in that, in that mindset. Now, we will have, uh, we will have revenue and things that will come through for people that do have the income to pay that. Or we will offer a payment plan, or they may have to take a class, there's, there's quite a bit there. But this is what, uh, we'll be focused on for, uh, a measurement for LFOs. And this is an example, um, so we'll focus on traffic, criminal, and ordinance, we'll talk about, I'm gonna give you one that shows revenue and one that shows noncash, okay? So, that way you'll have an opportunity to see the differences on how we're getting compliance. All right, cost per case. Um, if you're a businessperson, you'll probably love this one the most, my old council's always enjoyed this one, cost per case. So, we, um, are gonna be measuring how much we're spending on a case. Now, juveniles and trials are gonna cost the most, because they're gonna have the most touches, right, and they take more time. Um, and that's standard across the state of Texas. But with new technologies, I'm gonna be bringing some really cool stuff and sending you guys some tickets in February, uh, not real tickets, just pretend. Uh, but we are gonna be implementing some new technologies that will send you a message, you can click on that message on your text or email, and it will pull up your citation. It will give you every single glossary term and explanation of what you can do with that ticket, and it will only show compliance options that are eligible for that ticket. For example, if you got a driver's license violation ticket, you would have a compliance tick button that would show, and it would tell you what you needed to submit to the court to prove that you took care of that and got your license. The goal for compliance dismissals is to get people with insurance, to get people to have current driver's licenses, right? So that we're more of an accountable community. So compliance ones would actually, it'll help save a lot of time for us, and the defendants aren't coming back to court three times. That's a lot, that's a lot. Um, we're gonna focus on new technologies, we're gonna be focused on training. We want accurate information given to defendants, whether it be through technology or at the window or on the phone. And then we're gonna follow best practices, best practices that come from the National Center for State Courts. This is an example of the report that we'll be providing, cost per case. What we'll do is, we'll take each different type of docket. So we'll have like an initial appearance docket, we'll have a show cause docket where they didn't do what they should do, and, and we'll having, you know, we'll be having different types of dockets listed, and juvenile dockets, right? So that you'll be able to see the cost per case based on the type of, of process and ju- and, um, type of docket, okay? And the trials, trials would be another option.
Leah?
Yes, sir.
The word delinquency is misspelled?
Oh, it's not, I didn't type that one, I just took it as a reference, I'm sorry. I know, I saw.
I didn't know that was gonna be an official.
No, it's not the real form, it's just what I'm, I'm developing that, that was a good catch, Mr. Boskins.
I'm detailed, man, I'm sorry.
I like it, no, hey, you're preaching to the choir, ask these girls. I can see an error on anything a mile away, it's terrible. These are my milestones, so remember I told you I had some solutions? So one of my solutions is the data, right? I want you to be able to measure how well we're doing, and we're gonna, we are going to improve. By the end of January, we should have our judicial appointment set, and we will go through our standing orders. That'll take us about a month, because we have to go through and talk to the presiding judge, and we have to build that. So that's in January. In February, we're gonna focus on implementing that technology I was talking about. We're already working on that, we have our contracts approved. We'll be having kiosks that'll have options in the lobby, we have a kiosk outside, and we also will have it going with text messaging to defendants. We'll have, um, them be able to process their cases and make a payment right on their cellphone. So it's really gonna make a huge difference. Um, we will focus in March to complete our data metrics, so you should have your first quarter's information. Uh, we'll take one quarter at a time, uh, for data, so that you'll be able to see those improvements quarter to quarter. Uh, and April, our goal, these are big goals, stretch goals, I know. Uh, April, my big focus is to work with HR between now and then, on employee retention. We need competitive compensation to be able to keep these clerks, if we want to have a lesser number of FTEs, but, but people that can give better information, right? Um, on May, in May, our focus is gonna be on culture. Um, I don't know if you've been to the court, but, um, we've had a flood about three months ago, two months ago, two and a half months ago, and, and we still have, uh, baseboard stuff all in the office, and we have wet tiles, and it's really gross. So we are gonna be working diligently with, um, our building services and development departments to get that cleaned up, because it's, it, you know, it's, it's not good for morale, right? Um, if you've got that. And we also, um, I'm taking everybody out of their little side-load offices, and I'm putting everybody into the main bullpen, okay? Uh, and so we're wanting to have our, um, cubicles to be divided out, just some cubicle adjustments. Um, but I think it's really important that we're all together, we're one team, uh, so that we can learn from one another and help one another. Um, the next one is gonna be financial management. Um, I talked to Gopi about budget consolidation between the judges and the court. Normally, the court clerk is in charge of administrative functions for the court. If you look at those, not to be ugly, but judges are not accountants or CPAs or usually into budget. So, um, I've asked to consolidate that into one department with two divisions, which is how a standard court, especially of this size, would, would be. All right, my last six. Compliance, uh, virtual court dockets. Remember in COVID how you could do lots of thi- lots of things on your cellphone? Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna focus on reintegrating a virtual docket, so that people that are on the, in the patch, they have these things that are really cool called boosters. You ever seen those? You get a cell signal anywhere, I didn't even know they had those till I came here, so I'm learning. Uh, but yeah, they have boosters, so they could actually talk to the judge on their cellphone on their lunch, no matter where they are. Um, even if they're a resident here, or if they're just a, a temporary employee. Think about how much better compliance we'll get. And juveniles will be able to talk with their parents on their cellphone, so they wouldn't have to maybe miss school, right? Um, it'll, it'll be a really great partnership that we'll be working on. I've implemented that, we actually won an award for it, um, for the Dent, for Dent Municipal Court, I helped implement that technology, and that's part of it. Um, on security, we don't have any, we're working on that. I'm gonna be presenting an ordinance through Gopi, uh, for, uh, in January for, to begin a marshal's office. What we'll do is, we'll take four of our part-time positions, uh, or one full-time position and convert it to two part-times. We'll have four part-time peace officers, we'll work with OPD to get training, certification for their weapons, um, and that way we're ready to work together, right, with OPD, and provide security for our constituents, our judges, and our staff. Um, on, in September, uh, youth diversion, this was a huge legislative change, I don't know how many of y'all remember this, about, um, youth diversion. So, starting in January of twenty-five, many, many of the youth offenses will not be criminal anymore. They will actually not even be civil, they'll be called a diversion. So what will happen is, um, if it's a traffic, alcohol, tobacco, or graffiti, there's certain things that the state considers a crime of moral turpitude, um, those will remain criminal. But everything else will be a diversion. So that, we have to come up with a diversion plan, we have to have it in place and active by January twenty twenty-five. So my goal is to have that done by September, so that we can actually make sure our technology's working, our state reporting is working, and we're ready to go for January first. And we'll be working with Teen Court as well on that one. Um, October twenty-four, certification. I've challenged all my court staff to get one level of certification, the giant book, um, by October. We will be hosting luncheon learns, uh, every two weeks with the court staff. Um, I was a certified trainer for the, for the handbook, so I'm gonna train the staff, and we'll go through and take a pre-test. We'll read through the unit, make sure they have any questions, I'll answer those, and then we'll do a pre-test at the end to see if they're ready to take their test. So we'll be doing that, um, if they struggle with anything, my supervisors will actually study with them one-on-one for an hour in another alternate week. The clerks will be studying this material in their own time, but we will dedicate one hour every two weeks to do a luncheon learn, to help them to achieve this important goal. November twenty-four, data integrity. We will have gone through our entire data integrity system to make sure that all our state reports are correctly reporting. Um, it will take time, I just want to be honest, it'll take a few months to get all that done, because it's very complicated, but we will adjust our processes, and we'll take one process at a time. We won't wait until November, but my goal date to finish is November. The last one, and probably one of the most exciting, is process audit. We actually have to go through and look at all the statutes, and make sure that we're complying with every single statute. And I'll show you. This is one page of forty-seven areas we're responsible for as a municipal court, um, in Texas. And this tells you, these are resources, I've got links to all the resources that are prele- that are relevant. It tells you which process it is, and what we're responsible for, and how we're gonna meet that goal. So we will have to go through forty-seven of these individual items, um, before we complete that task, which will take us a year. And you can see why, right? These are our main five goals for twenty twenty-four. Uh, we want to protect our fundamental, um, constitutional legal rights for our defendants while promoting the rule of law, which means we want to follow the statute, right? We want to be in compliance. We want to elevate compliance for our defendants via access to justice. We want to give them ways to interact with the court where they don't have to physically come out three times. Uh, we want to support timely and fair case disposition, which means we don't want to make them wait four months before they get to come to court. Uh, we want to provide education for our court organization as a whole, not just the judges, but the prosecutors, the court clerks, and myself as well, to make sure we're on top of the latest and greatest and the best practices. And the last one is, we want to promote the independence of the judiciary, this is the most important, through the budgetary process and independent policymaking functions. So, compliance, right? Just get that word, if you can help me with that, compliance is our goal. If someone's a single mom, she may be indigent, but we will have compliance, it just may look differently than a dollar bill. Anybody have a question for me? I've given you a lot of information, you stayed away, good job.
One question real quick, how much is that fine we had to pay?
Um, I am calculating it right now, and I can send that to you.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, it'll be a few thousand.
Do you feel comfortable with the software that you have?
I implemented Tyler, so yes, sir. I, I did that for a couple of years, actually. Yeah, between, I was putting three kids through college, so I left the public sector just for a little while, and went to the private sector to help out, and then went back to public sector. But I only worked for public sector, so. Yeah, it's a lot of fun. Now, it's set up in a different way, um, each person who implements it is set up in their own way, so I'm having to kind of go through best practices of what I know from the state, and review all those processes, and that's part of this, this plan. But I do know how to do it, sir, yes, sir. Any other questions? I can give you the dollar amount, I'm sorry, I should have, I didn't, I haven't finished the report, and I'm almost done.
No, that's okay, I, I was just curious, when you're, if somebody's paying their, uh, their ticket by phone, by cellphone, using a credit card, how many times it gets rejected, then, then what? I mean, I'm just saying, the credit card gets rejected, do you do it once, twice, three times, and then you gotta come in?
So they can go as many times as they want, but it'll reject it if the funds are not there. So it's gonna hold those funds, um, if it's available. If it's not available, it will reject it. Um, but is that what you're asking?
No, I'm asking if it's not clicked, if it doesn't clear, then what?
Oh, it'll automatically, it's just like Walmart, when you write a check, they scan it in, it hits it immediately, tells them if that money's there or not, it puts a hold on it right then and there on their cellphone.
If it never, if it never clears, it's just like they didn't pay the ticket.
It's just like they didn't pay the ticket, it won't even show. It just shows they made an attempt, it'll have a message on there, and I'll, I'll show you that, I'm sorry. It'll have a message on there, on our system, that says that they made an attempt to pay, but it was rejected and denied. And it actually even gives us a field that tells us exactly what the credit card company said. So it could be a stolen credit card, it'll tell us if it's insufficient funds, whatever the credit card company gives us back. It will show that record, though, so sorry, I didn't understand your question.
I'm sorry, I probably wasn't very clear, thank you.
No, it's me, it's me, I'm.
And eventually they'll get a warrant.
Eventually they'll get a warrant, correct?
That's what I was trying to get to.
Yes, so, so the platform will actually allow them, they'll get a message th- the day after they get a ticket. So OPD's finest is gonna be out there writing them a ticket, right? And so the next day, they'll get a text message, we've asked OPD to take a cellphone number, and we will send that. If the cellphone number's incorrect, we actually have a sheet that shows us if they opened that message. It's, technology's pretty fascinating now. And so it tells us, the judge and the court, if they even opened and read it. So if they say they never got it, we can prove that they did. Um, and so that's really helpful. And then they'll get, um, and then they can click on that link, and they can go in, and it tells them all the different options that they have, what their please can be, what options are available for that particular offense. We have it with bumpers, you ever played bumper bowling? Well, you have bumpers, my granddaughter, she's not very good at bowling. And so we did the bumpers, but bumpers kind of put in place so that every offense is coded, so that only the offenses that have those eligible options would show. Because we don't want them choosing a DSC if they're a commercial driver's license holder, right? Because they're not eligible, so we have that all coded. I've, I've got it all coded, I've already built this spreadsheet.
Very good.
Sounds good.
Anything else?
Where, um, refresh my memory, where are we in ticketing now? I think I, I overheard it was paper? No, okay, so it's, we're creating.
We're, we're, we're diligently working side by side. Uh, San Antonio runs digital tickets as well, uh-huh, they do e-citations. Uh, are we, is our e-citation writer working as well?
Yeah, we're going digital at the time of the traffic stop.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
Um, I think it's just a great idea that when OPD stops.
Speak in the microphone.
And, and tickets, that we are creating a digital ticket at that point in time.
Correct.
Wow, wonderful.
But it's, the problem is, it's not, um, coming through consistently. Um, and, and we've talked with them, I didn't realize that they weren't getting communication until we met. Um, but they were just putting them, I guess, in a drawer, so, um, we had quite a few of those.
It's not that we're not digital, it's, uh.
It's that we're having, we're having software issues, integration issues. So, for example, um, one of our most common things that we're working together on is, we'll have two tickets with the same citation number, right? Same ticket number, but two different people, different offenses. And it's a glitch in the system somehow. We had a batch of seventy tickets that just didn't come across. Um, the only reason we're catching those, we're working together with his, um, his team, um, is we can run a report that tells me where the gaps are, right, in the citation entries. Again, I used to implement an audit, so I'm like, I'm just looking and trying to figure out. But I, 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 we, we really didn't know until I first, that first week. Um, we found all this, I was looking at the data, we're looking through the desks, and we find all this, this stuff.
Identifying the Achilles' heel.
Yes, sir.
The flow.
But we are trying to work together with it on, for sure.
Talk a little bit about, a little more, I want to be a little more clear on what you just said about you finding the desk. What, what, what exactly did you find? What, what was exactly going on?
I, I mean, we were cleaning out desks from people that used to be there, and we just found piles of tickets.
People paying fines?
Uh-huh.
And by check?
Uh-huh, or a check or money order, um, and it.
The checks and the money orders were in the desk.
Uh-huh.
How far, how far?
A long time, I mean, it's a while, yeah.
This is, this was consistent all the way around through the whole city, seems like it.
Well, I mean, I, we've put them in since, I mean, we've processed everything since then, we've not, we wouldn't do that. We would send them back to the defendants if we can't process it. Now, some of the tickets, I, I mean, I'm gonna be honest, as far as compliance numbers, it is gonna be down a little bit, because we've had to dismiss a lot of tickets with errors and problems, right?
And that was gonna be my next question. Somebody paid it, and they were in the process, it didn't show it was paid, and they say, hey, look, I wrote the check.
Right. You're right. We're having to send those back.
Do y'all feel confident Lexus Nexus will?
I thought you had a term, sorry.
Do y'all feel confident that Lexus Nexus will work the problems out?
Well, I, I think we'll find out next week, because they're sending a team here next week.
Um, they're, they're sending a team here to work with our people, they're gonna come visit, uh, municipal court,
and, and if, uh, Mr. Beckmeyer, if you would like, they would, they will absolutely be open to come visiting city management.
What exactly, Chief, are they gonna be involved? Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sorry?
Would love to be involved.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So what exactly are they coming and doing?
So Lexus Nexus is, we, so we've been, uh, we've been doing e-citations for several years now, for about five years.
Walk us through that real quick, Chief, what does that mean, e-citation?
All right, so our first e-citation company, I won't name the company, but, but we wanted to move away from it, because our customer service there was not great.
Okay.
Um, at first it was, a new company bought it, and then, uh, customer service, uh, wow, just deteriorated. So what we had to do with that company is, uh, we were paying so much a year per user, so we could only afford about forty ticket writers. So everyone, all the officers had to share those, those ticket writers and the printers. So it came out, the little, the little tickets were printed on a, a little form like that. So, we, we were, we got to the point where those ticket writers, we couldn't use it on phone, we couldn't use it on a cellphone, you had to buy special writers for that, right? Um, and then special printers for that. Those printers and those, uh, writers started breaking, and we were unable to get them fixed, and it was costing more to get them fixed, so we started looking for a new solution. We looked, um, we, we chose Lexus Nexus, which is a large company, uh, if you look, think about Accurant and things like that that are out there. So we chose them. We were a beta. Uh, we were a beta with a lot of stuff with Axon. And what that got for us was some very significant price reductions with Axon. With Axon, everything, uh, we've had zero issues with Axon as, as we move forward, even with our beta, we've created a lot of great relationships with them. Axon had a strategic partnership with Lexus Nexus, which is one of the reasons they, that we chose them. Uh, we've been less than happy with that so far. They've been working with us to, to fix things, their, I think, a final push is that, is their team coming here next week to work with our team, to work with municipal court, and to be involved with city management, just. And if, if that doesn't happen, then I think we'll have a conversation with, uh, Mr. Jones and, and see what we need to do to move on from that. To this point, we have paid them zero dollars and zero cents, we have paid them nothing. Our, my agreement with their salesman is that we won't pay them anything until it works. If it doesn't work, we're not gonna pay.
Lexus Nexus and Mr. Thompson's probably, may be familiar with them. They're one of the oldest information companies in the United States, they're a reputable co- company. But they're doing a beta software, and that's where we're kind of stuck on this, I believe. They should have the resources to fix them.
So the e-citation part is, it, we had, at, at the beginning, there were some issues, even writing the citations and getting those done. Those have been worked out. Now the, the main issues are getting them to municipal court. Some of the issue is just some miscommunication. I think before we came up here, I, I think we discovered that some of the, some of the missing tickets aren't really missing tickets, because the number, the ticket numbers are in order, and so our, even when we write a warning ticket, it's showing up on her report. Well, she doesn't get that, because there's no fine to pay on a warning ticket, right? But to her, it looks like it's a missing ticket, but it's not.
Okay.
So, that, that's some of those.
So some of the issues have.
Well, right, and we're, right now, because that's a new, that's a new find.
Yeah.
We don't know how many of those exist, right?
And we do have, we have, we have many, 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 many examples of missing tickets, though, um, from defendants. Because if a defendant comes to the window or calls, we have many, many, many that I don't need the report for. And the percentage of war- of warnings that the officers are writing would, should be about fifteen percent, I'm sure they're writing. I mean, that's an average agency, I was looking up some statistics to try to come up with. So fifteen percent, maybe, but not the number that we, I mean, we had seventy tickets in one day that we tried to import, and we're looking at the numbers, and I'm like, there's not that many warnings, right? And we found out that the XML files didn't come over. So it's a technical thing, but again, and I get free software, and I know, and they've been diligent to work with us, but at what cost are we losing with compliance? I mean, and people are not getting punished or penalized for speeding or doing other things, or if they're in an accident, we have a lot of people calling, and he knows that as well, he's, their, his team has been great to help us look them up, and they've even looked at the video to try to figure out who it is and what it is, and, and I hate it for his team, because that's difficult, you know? But they've been very part, they partnered with us to try to resolve it as best we can. But again, it's no fault of his own, no one was giving him that information before, um, before I came and we started going through, but, um, so, sorry about that. I, I, you know, it's a partnership in some ways, so.
Chief Gurke, this may be a very minor matter, but is our current parking meter situation, uh, under your department's, uh, jurisdiction as far as people, uh, getting parking tickets, because?
Right, yes, it is.
You have someone that is writing tickets?
No, we don't.
We can get you something, Mr..
Those quarters I've been putting in there.
We appreciate that.
That was a decision made moons ago, many moons ago, by a prior administration that said, and, and really, there, um, there are a lot of issues with that. So, one of the main issues is it's cheaper to pay that parking ticket than to feed the, it, see, if you're gonna park there all day, it's cheaper to pay that three-dollar ticket than it is to feed the machine.
Is it three bucks?
It's three bucks. And if you don't pay it, then I think it becomes eight dollars.
Thank you for that information.
I mean, that's, 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 that's what it is. So it's really, a lot of people have just, just, e- even before then, were just determined that it was easier to, to just pay the fine than, than feed the machine. Also, there's a lot of, there's a lot of conflict between county and, and city government over that, because there's parking meters around the courthouse, and when we ticket those individuals that work in the courthouse, that creates fr- uh, friction with city management. That has happened in the past.
Really?
Absolutely.
So that means I can go park and not have to feed that, haven't seen him.
So now, now you're gonna have a lot of, so, they civilized the parking here, um, when you look at the code ordinances, you civilized the parking, someone on council approved that years ago. And so what that means is, the fines are a lot lower and the court costs are very low. If it was a criminal offense, if we didn't have that ordinance, it would be a criminal offense, the police officers would have to write those tickets, right? Um, so like in Fort Worth, uh, the police assigns it to Transportation Public Works, for example. And they do have meter readers that aren't police officers, but it's civil. So they, you know, they have that person out there enforcing it, um, and writing, writing citations on people's tickets. But that's why if you use the, the meters versus having an officer issue them, is because it's civil, not criminal.
Okay. Interesting. That's a lot of information. But I'll tell you one thing, that's information we hadn't had in prior, now we got some movement going on. And some hope and some encouragement. Thank you very much for what you guys are doing. Thank you very much, excellent. Hey, we're excited too. Don't, don't tell me you'll get a big.
Make a stop now.
Kathy, and real quickly, one of the things is, is we are speaking, please try to speak into the mic. We are, have been getting some consistent complaints about people on the audio there cannot hear us. And so if we can't, if we, if nobody can hear you here across, back and forth, that way we can try to reduce that a little bit. I, we're gonna go ahead and move on, any further questions on item five? Okay. Item six, discuss donating the portion of the ARPA funds to MCH funds for the mental health hospital. These funds would be given to the medical hospital for the mental health hospital, health hospital. Was Mr. Tippin gonna be coming in, he's gonna be coming in? I thought he was coming in, we had invited. Okay, so the hospital asked to be placed on the agenda for this. I, they might've gotten it wrong, thought it was for six, but we did tell them. So the hospital did give us a call, there were two, two occasions. And they saw that we did, they allocate some funds. So they are asking, there's gonna be an ask, an official ask of the council to consider a monetary donation to their foundation. That'd be to the, they have a foundation that they're asking for money that they want to appropriate for mental health. Whether that be in Hector County or in the new facility that's built in, being, they already broke ground seventeen eighty-eight. Now, the ask is for their foundation. One of the questions that we asked is, we consider, you know, once we go, go forward and consider this, is one of the things is, what do we consider expensed? It goes to a foundation, you know, is that considered an, you know, expended? Because we have to allocate it, but then it has to be spent. Yes. Uh, twenty-six. And so we wanna be clear that if we do this, if the donation to the foundation is, it's the expense. Yeah, and so we need to get that clarification. So.
Well, if you, if you write the check to the foundation, then it's expended. And that's what they deposited into their account.
Yes, and that's what we said, but we just wanna make sure.
Yeah, sure, sure.
That, that's how we interpret it. Because we said, well, you know, you write it, you deposit it.
We're done.
We're done. And so it's, that should be good enough. But we don't wanna get to a point that we get down to twenty-six and go, no, that's not. And so, but I, I think we're pretty much clear on that. So.
How much did they ask?
Million, yeah.
Million. A million.
Million from the county, a million from the city.
Yes.
Different like contributions from Midland.
And so, yes, so the, the, they are asking for a million for the county, for the city. And also, they're going to go through the surrounding areas. So they're going to their service areas outside of Hector County. They'll be going to Crane, McCamey, Monahan's, Baker, everywhere that they service are gonna, they're gonna be seeking. Now, we're talking about a twenty-bed facility, that'll probably be for mental health.
Well, and I ask, and I speak to, to, to an extent, it's a two-hundred-bed facility. On, I asked, on day one, how many beds for mental health? I was told two hundred, I'm like, no. How many beds for mental health? I heard eighty, he said. And the response I got was a hundred or maybe fifty. It's not gonna offload what Chief Gurkey's people have to haul to San Angelo, Big Spring, Abilene, wherever, San Antonio. But it's a good facility for us to be involved, my opinion is, to you all. It's a good facility for us to be involved with. The same people that may need to use this facility or, but won't travel to another town, now we have something right here. And it's a good, it's probably a good expense.
It will get filled up, but it does give us enough.
We do have a question, is that expended? I believe it is, but we need to make sure, nail, nail it down and make sure it's not. If not, then we need to look at Mr. McGee and see what is.
Mr. Mayor. Is this gonna be for emergencies too, this clinic? Can we just basically loan, donate this money to this for the emergencies here in Hector County? Cause this county has a lot of, a lot of stuff so that it stays just in this county.
In, in, in the end, I don't think that, we kinda discussed this, and I think Mr. Beckmeyer had a real good perception on this, is that even the million dollars, we're always gonna have to transport, this facility's gonna get full. There's no way we're not gonna be able to transport to other facilities outside Hector County. But, on the other hand, it doesn't guarantee, because we're participating and working, that they're gonna have beds open for us. They're gonna have, we assume, we don't know, that there'll be beds for emergency cases, for those that are here local, but in the end, we don't know.
There will be a little bit along those lines. It will take the evaluation and the, the mental emergencies out of the regular hospitals.
Yes, yes.
They'll be able to go into the emergency room there, have qualified people looking at them.
So we'll have those beds available.
They may still have to be transported out of emergency, but it gets them out of MCH.
Which, I mean, sometimes it can be a little long-term.
Is the emergency facilities, their emerg, the mental emergency.
Yeah.
I don't know what the technical term is, but that's huge, sorry.
I'm no, it's my fault, though. My, my question is, is this a one-time donation or an annual donation that we'll be to participate in?
One time.
One-time donation.
One time.
It's a, it's a, it's a badly needed facility, anybody will tell you that. Whether it's Hector County, Midland County, you know, it, it all runs together, Mr. Haney, anymore. It's just, it's hard to delineate where, a lot of people live in Midland and work in Odessa, so are they Midland people or are they Odessa people? Who knows? So, you know, if you think about that, I mean, if you go down Highway eighty, at six o'clock, you'll have traffic from Grant all the way to Foggy Road, bumper to bumper, right, Chief? And the same way coming this way. So who knows what county they live in or in between? So that's something I, I think you can't delineate it that far. You just, you gotta, I think we gotta support the facility as a regional facility. And I think that's the right approach. In the PSP meeting this last week with Secretary Evans and Senator Cornyn, you know, they're talking about how badly needed this. And because we have to keep sending people so far. You know, we've still got seventeen counties, south and west of us, that don't have anything. They have to go to El Paso or, I guess, San Angelo, John, I'm not sure, but. Yeah, it's south and west, so that's just, it, it's just sorely, sorely needed.
And along those lines, not that it matters that much, this was a priority for both the governor and the lieutenant governor.
Right. Senator, Senator Cor, Cornyn was very, very impressed with, with, and all the oil companies that work in both counties. You know, PSP stepped up big time. And that's everybody, both counties, all the oil companies, service companies in both counties, so.
So in, in, and so when we looked at the allocation, we had three million that we sent over to MCH that we got back, that we de-allocated. There was a million from OMC that we de-allocated that never went through the process. So, you know, I really believe that the million that we have there is definitely something that I'm asking the council to consider and to move forward with a commitment, consensus, that this is something that we wanna do and put on a regular agenda so we can vote for it and make the presentation. Any comments? I like it.
What's the goal on that? What's the time, give me a perspective, what's the time duration of treatment? Kinda better understand what they're wanting to achieve?
Yeah, we'd have to talk to. We, we, we don't know. And, and if, and if we thought we would, we'd probably get it wrong.
Oh, yeah, there's no way to get that.
It's not a virtue. You know, the, the, the item on the agenda today is, or the work session is, to get a consensus for the council, if they would consider the million dollars to the, the foundation that belongs to MCH.
Yes.
Sounds good.
Mr., Mr. Mayor. So suicide is a big thing in this town. Lots, lots of mental instability. If we could do this money better to give to the fire department and the police department to have somebody that could, could do a stabilization from there, would this be better spent?
I don't know, I mean, I don't know if we have a program like that. But the thing is, is what fits under the, the, the ARPA. You know, it, it, it's arbitrage, it's not money just to be given out for the sake of giving it out. Spending it, what's that saying, is there's nothing I can't do with your money? It's unlimited. But we do have very narrow guidelines of what we can use it for. I mean, even within the roads, they're very specific. Arbitrage, we just can't go out, can we spend it for, for water or not? Yeah, but what are the, and so, and two, you know, this money isn't gonna be recurring. When it's spent, it's spent. We create a program, and once we initially spend it, how do we continue, that continuation? Great idea, I think that it's, we, and we do have a lot of that. But the thing is, is that what's the game plan? What's, what happens after we, the initial expense? And so.
Well, you'd have to, you'd have to hire professionals to, to do that stabilization. If our people were doing it, this is not practical. They're gonna have a hard time, in my opinion, I've talked, Mr. Tippin's at length about this, they're gonna have a hard time staffing. And John, I've talked about this, ten hundred beds is gonna be hard to staff with mental professionals.
Yes.
That's gonna be very difficult, Texas Tech's gonna be involved, UT Southwestern's gonna be involved, TBV's gonna be involved. I sit in those PSP meetings and I hear that from all of those different departments here, or, you know, chancellors, governors, whatever.
That's why each hospital's bracing for loss of personnel.
Yeah.
And so it, it, it's gonna be an impact.
But that specialty still doesn't happen everywhere.
Yeah.
The middle part of this, psych, 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 whatever that word is. The nut house, so. Psychotry, so anyway, but that's, that's the idea. It's a, it's a worthy cause.
Well, for the initial, basically, there is a consensus from the council to move forward for the donation of the portion of ARPA funds up to a mi, a million dollars that for the, to fundamental he, health hospital. And so we'll communicate it, put it on the, on the agenda for next January? I was gonna already say two weeks, January, and, and we'll move forward from that. Thank you very much, we really appreciate it. And we'll, Mr. City Manager, we'll get ahold of Mr. Tippin. Seeing that there is no more business before this council, do I have a motion to adjourn by council member?
So may.
Swaner, second by council member.
I second it.
Vazquez, and all in favor, and Katie Basain, aye.
Aye.
All opposing, Katie Basain, nix. Motion to adjourn, we are adjourned, we'll see you here at six o'clock.